Please, Joyce.
Board member Drake.
Here.
Board member Nysel. Board member Steen.
Here.
Board member Van Blarke.
Here.
Supervisor Dischafani.
Here. Read the notice, please, Joyce.
Yes. Town of Shandaken Town Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to section 274 and/or section 276 of the state law and as prescribed in the district's schedule of area and bulk regulations of the Shandaken Code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant: Regarding a timber harvest permit for the applicant Winisook Incorporated for the parcel located at Alvaria Road, Big Indian, New York, 124810, indicated as SBL34 dot dash one dash four, located in residential Zone 3. The public hearing is scheduled for March 7th at 6:30 PM at the Shandaken Town Hall, 7209 Route 28, Shandaken.
Thank you, Joyce. Anyone have comments about timber harvesting?
Nobody signed up for it. So we have the permit. We have the liability insurance. All this here. Do you need to look at it?
All the required
Yes.
Documentations.
They've done it before.
Can we just adjourn and go to the next one?
Give me five minutes. You never know.
Silence makes me very uncomfortable.
Talk amongst yourselves. Talk amongst yourselves.
Somebody talk to Captain.
Please, anybody.
I know this, they've done this multiple times. Does anyone recall when their last application was? I believe that was in there.
Last September. And then these guys had wanted to apply late last year and then they backed off.
That was my contribution to the silence.
That's good. I appreciate it.
Is there a motion to close?
Well, we're giving it five minutes.
Five minutes.
Give it five.
See, what I figured, we'd have the STR one. And this would give us a nice little spite in between the two bigger things, you know, because I knew. They've done them before. So we do have a dog in the dog pound. It's a German Shepherd. And if anybody knows of anybody missing a German Shepherd, it was found at the bottom of Big Indian Road on 28th, Saturday night.
So that answers my next question.
Yeah, there's, there's.
What's his name? We don't know.
We're gonna name him Roy Digness if nobody claims it. So, um.
A young female.
He doesn't have a chip. There's no chip. But he had a collar for one of those invisible fences. So obviously somebody cares about the dog. But the photo is on our Facebook page, town Facebook page. So if you all share it, that'd be great. Could've come over from another county. We don't know.
Do we have a should we agree with that?
Yes, we do.
I heard.
We've had it for a few years.
Now, I think it's.
I know. Yes. If you want to speak, yes. If you would, please. And then I'll call your name. You can speak about the timber harvest, Beth, if you want. That'd be great. No waiting for that. We're gonna give the dog a plug while they're silent.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful dog.
She's like, yeah, she's very cute.
It's female, too.
Yeah, yeah.
She seems personable.
Yeah.
And if they have one of those things for visible fencing, I mean, obviously if people care, that's always good.
A couple of years ago, I had done a hike. And I walked back. I'm exhausted, of course. I opened the door, get in my car, and a dog upsetly out of nowhere ran and jumped into my car. And I'm driving around, you know, and I look and like, it has, it has a phone number on it, but of course I have no cell service. So I wound up driving around and I happened to find a house.
Oh.
Yeah, two or three miles up the road. And I parked there being like, could I use your phone? Or like, have you seen this dog or anything?
Yeah.
Um, and, um, it was the owners of a rental property and the renters had just left, like, disconsolate.
Oh, God.
Because they had lost their, lost their dog.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
And like, it's just one of those
We lost a lot of hiking. A lot of our hiking dogs.
Serendipitous kind of things there.
Hey, Angela. Angela, I heard your Rolletini is very good.
(laughing) It wasn't mine.
Oh, okay, very good. I thought maybe it was a group effort.
He kicks me out.
Here, here, here. Take a fancy look.
I won't say any of this.
I still got him.
Yeah, my parents raved about it.
Well, she'll be working at the town hall next month, so she could, we'll expect that as one of her jobs.
Right.
To bring that in.
Right.
Patty's, Patty's leaving, so she's gonna be my new deputy.
Very good.
Yep. I'm gonna ask him.
No rules.
So we have to do a motion on that so I can advertise?
On what? What do we need to move? Resignation?
Yes.
All good things. All good things.
I should have.
Yeah. That's why we left the public hearing open.
Hi.
How's it going?
We're waiting comments on logging.
There are no comments.
Sitting on the ground.
Did this start?
Yeah, we had to start at 6:30.
Oh, I didn't.
Two public hearings.
I totally spaced. I didn't put it on my calendar.
Well, except you didn't miss much.
All right.
I don't believe you for a second.
How did I mix that up?
I know, that's rhetorical. Don't worry. I know what you were gonna say.
Just think of it this way, you're real early for the regular meeting, so.
Yeah, I just like.
See there?
Look at that.
Silver lining.
That's totally how I'm looking at it. Oh, yeah, no, it says it right there, 6:00 PM. It's right there, same email, you got 6:00 PM. Yep. Yeah, look at that. Yay, reading. I was actually maybe 6:30 because somehow I missed that, too. But I would've maybe noted. Well, you know, I got a kid at home with pneumonia and asthma, so kind of losing track of things. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm typically doing secret review, recurring logging permit, you know.
A lot of people here.
In the town where they said, it'd be exciting, they say.
Okay, yes. All right, everybody.
Very exciting.
I make a motion. We close the public hearing for the timber harvesting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So motioned. Okay, um, let's stand for the pledge for the CAC.
How do the, is that first?
Joyce, read the notice.
There we go. Town Board of Town of Shandaken will hold a public hearing on enacting the Conservation Advisory Comm- did we change the name of that?
Council.
Council. Local Law 1 of 2022. Monday, March 7th at 6:45, Shandaken Town Hall, 7209 Route 28, to hear, to hear all comments for or against.
Roll call, please.
Board member Drake.
Present.
Board member Nysel.
Here.
Board member Steen.
Here.
Board member Van Blarke.
Here.
Supervisor Dischafani.
Here. So I guess that's what everybody's here for. If anybody wants to speak, there's a sign-in sheet down here. Uh, this is about local law to be a Conservation Advisory Council. Uh, it's gonna be a membership of seven people. I have a, a couple of people I have in mind that have agreed to be on it. We're looking for other people to be on it. It's gonna, uh, we're hoping that you'll meet once a month. We're kind of tying this together with the Climate Smart Community, which we are, and we've passed a resolution to be that. Uh, there will be, uh, the chair of this council will also be a climate smart, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Coordinator. Right, right. Um, I would like actually Europa from Ulster County to speak first and talk about the Conservation Advisory Council. There are many in the county and throughout the state.
All right, good evening, everyone. Well, thank you for inviting me here tonight. Um, for those of you who don't know, I'm Europa McGovern with the Ulster County Department of the Environment. Um, some of you may be familiar with my former colleague, Aaron Bennett, who I know worked closely with the town for years. Um, that position of environmental planner is actually housed in our department, so he was a colleague of mine. And good news is, um, that position will be filled in the coming weeks, so you'll be meeting, um, his, you know, replacement. And so, um, I'm sure they'll be working with the town, supporting various initiatives as well. Just so you can place who I am and where I'm coming from. So just a little background on Conservation Advisory Councils. Um, basically, there's, from my last count, our department's last count, there's about 15 of these out of the 24 municipalities, plus the county in Ulster County. Um, the county equivalent of a CAC, I'll call it, is the Environmental Management Council. And so the county, my department, basically coordinates and facilitates the county's environmental management council. And by forming a local CAC, you can, um, send a representative, up to two representatives from the town to the county EMC. Um, additionally, if you appoint, um, former CAC and appoint members, um, I have a whole idea of, um, probably a year's worth of guests and member, and, uh, you know, speakers that you could potentially invite to a CAC to kind of give you some background information on what the county's doing, what other CACs are doing. Um, Dave Haldeman from the town of Shawangunk is the chair of the county CAC, EMC, that is. And, um, he's actually been making the rounds to all of the local CACs. So I know he would welcome the opportunity to be invited to one of your initial meetings if you do move forward with this. Um, and again, give you an outlook on some of the resources. Appointing a CAC, of course, that's an advisory body, as I think most here are familiar with, um, to local decision-makers in the town, um, in a functions and an advisory capacity. There's a lot of resources it can give you access to. Um, one of the things is, um, the New York State Association of Conservation Commissions. Um, there's a small annual membership, um, so any town can, can join that, that NISAC it's called. There's annual conference, there's trainings. Um, so that's one resource. Again, you can tap into, um, all the other, uh, CACs around the county. Um, and then also the CAC, as the supervisor mentioned, can function as a climate smart communities task force. Um, it can, that can be a separate entity, or most communities seem to house it within their CAC. Because again, it's a lot of the same folks working on the same initiatives, accessing resources on behalf of the town. Um, climate smart task forces, I'll just jump on that really quickly. This is about 16 participating climate smart communities in the county, including the town, um, which passed the pledge, I think it was a few years ago, right?
Yeah, 2016.
Yeah. But, um, again, there's a lot of towns that pass the pledge and don't necessarily move forward with coordinating around the various actions and sometimes grants, and also certification levels that you can voluntarily choose to move forward with, um, which, you know, if you choose to go, say, towards bronze certification or silver, like the county is. Um, and I think there's about six bronze climate smart communities in the county. You know, you can get access, increasingly preferential access to, um, state grants and other grants. We also maintain, I have it with me, and I have a whole packet that I can leave with you tonight, but I have, um, a picture of a map that we also maintain of all the participating climate smart communities in the county. So you'll see your town on the map as a participating community, and then you'll see those bronze and silver certified communities. Um, let's see. And just wrapping it up, like I said, there's a lot of resources you can get access to. It was actually my other colleagues, I forgot who I mentioned, that sort of invited me to, to come here tonight. It really could've been any other of the local entities that are resources, um, to your town. It could've been here, anyone from Ashokin Water Street Management Program.
Right. I invited, yep.
It could've been Linda Herzog or Brent Bolsh, who, you know, lost a BEP recently. Um, it could've been Aaron Bennett, you know. So again, there's a lot of resources. Um, in my former position, I worked as a regional coordinator for a couple of state programs, including the climate smart communities program. Um, I've been with the county about two years, but for years before that, I worked in seven county regions. So I've come to dozens and dozens of these meetings, you know, you know, in, before a CAC in Conservation Advisory Council's form, or sometimes I would use to come to meetings to be a resource and help them figure out what initiatives they might want to take, on what grants they might want to pursue. And so there is another resource, which is the Hudson Valley Regional Council, my former employer, um, which I'd be happy to put you in touch with as well. Um, and then, wrapping up, um, the county has an active solarized campaign, for example, and three, I think it's four, of the local towns in the county, um, CACs and climate smart task forces, decided to promote the county's community solarized campaign locally. Each of those four towns was able to get a little $5,000 grant to their general fund, and each of those five towns is using it to do things like have energy audits on municipal buildings.
Right.
Some of them are doing, using that, those little $5,000 grants to match, to help local businesses, also, um, do the cost shares for their energy audits. So there's, again, you can start accessing, accessing resources.
Great.
I'm, I'm here for questions. I could stick around for the town board meeting as well, until you cover it on the agenda, if you want.
Well, you know, now would be a great time to take some questions. Does anybody?
People on the list. Uh, Roy Digness, did you have any questions? Do you want to stand up and throw the microphone?
And I'm just gonna hand these over to the members.
Perfect. Yeah. And we'll take comments and then questions, too.
Thank you.
If you just want to stick around for some questions.
Roy Digness, I know, you're, um, I think you kind of answered one of my first questions, uh, with regards to, uh, to the grants, et cetera. This, this committee would make it easier to get grants?
Absolutely, yeah.
But not necessary?
No, it's all voluntary.
It's all voluntary. Is, is, is the ordinance here consistent with, with other towns' ordinances, or?
I mean, I didn't do a comprehensive review, but I assume there's a template that's yeah.
It's, it's right off the state.
Yeah.
It's right off the state. Nothing has been changed, except it's.
My, the issue, more concerned is, you know, when it starts to talk about private, private lands, you know, and certainly.
There is no way we're taking anybody's private land.
When you talk about, when you're doing an inventory, republic and private, and, and making recommendations as to proposed uses, you know, things like that, that, you know, it's a little concerning for the private landowners.
Yeah.
You know, and in addition, a lot of this stuff seems to be.
But it would be in harmony with the owner. Just, just like Safari and the county wants to try and mitigate flooding. We work with the landowner who's maybe experienced flooding. That's all this is, just like that. It would be working with the landowner, not stepping in and saying, you need to do this.
I think this is what the town should do with this person.
Yeah.
Just want to get that qualified, and then it's purely an advisory council.
Purely.
Okay, then you can either take their recommendations or, or not.
That's right. Absolutely.
All right, that's it. Thanks.
Rob?
I can talk to you after, which is technical.
Okay. We can talk after.
Rob Stanley, Pine Hill. Um, yeah, just, implementation of a board, like with the planning board, uh, or the parts and rep board, you have to flesh out how the people are getting appointed, because right now, the way the law is written, it just says you're gonna appoint a seven-member board, and it all expires on December 31st, two years from now. So you have to lay out, like, how they get, how they're appointed, like, one person's appointed for one-year term, or six months, or however you want to do it.
Yep.
If you look at the other laws, you can see.
I, I will do that. I just took it out of the state, the way it was written, and maybe they weren't paying attention, but.
You can look at our, our.
Yep.
I think, I, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, but I think in this packet, it actually, because I looked at this today, uh, I think it does state, one is like four years, the next is three years, the next is two years. But it should be in here.
Yeah, it should be in the law. I didn't see that. I don't know what the package.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was, anyway, when I first sent it over.
But I know, I know what you mean, though.
I've seen it somewhere.
Not in the one.
The other one is, because you're acting law on the board that you never actually had. Um, so just, I don't know, little advice, if you want to consider it, or do whatever you want to do, I really don't know. Um, but maybe make it a commission, or a committee, a standing committee at the town, for about a year, and then a year from now, if everything's going well, and then people can see what this committee does, or what this commission does, or whatever you're talking about. And then you enact that. But to just go, quite honestly, I haven't heard of clamor in the community for a vibrant board such as this. I'm not against it, but like, uh, I just think if you let it sit out for people to see how it operates, then they'll be more, more welcoming to the idea of an acting board that's a standing board on the town legally. Again, we just appointed it as a committee, just like any other standing committee, we did a parts and rep board, for the example, because they used to be a standing committee, the county town board. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Waterman?
Hi, I'm Beth Waterman, Big Indian. I am very excited about this opportunity, and I thank the town board for making it possible for us to consider having a Conservation Advisory Council. I think since 2016, when we passed the resolution, making ourselves a climate smart community, we never really took the step toward action. And now I think it's really critical for us to become more involved as a climate smart community. And I, I think it's an opportunity for people in this community to come together and try to help us plan our future, our, how to become more sustainable, and how to meet the goals of the county, and the state, and its new climate action, uh, law. So I'm very enthusiastic about this. It's a big job. It's, uh, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate all the help that the county can provide. And I, I hope we can move forward. I support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you.
Patty Roach?
Well, good evening, everybody. I am Patty Roach. I live up in Oliveria, and I can only second all that which Beth Waterman just stated. I think she stated it very clearly and very well. What I would add is that we're behind, and I'll be blunt. This should not be window dressing. We need to do something, and we need to do it now. And if I can help in some capacity, I would be glad to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's sit on the list.
That was all the list?
That was it.
Well, we have three minutes to the regular meeting. Take a break.
Should we close this?
Sure, let's, uh, I make a motion, we adjourn to the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It used to be in there. Um, I don't know why and how it got slipped out.
Yeah, but terms.
The term limits. Um, so we'll just put in there, term limits as set for.
It was, it was a decreasing.
Oh, here.
Yeah.
With, with a four-year term, a three-year term.
That's always exciting.
Two-year term.
I just read it again, it's not there. Hello.
It's really your check all the time.
There's the four years for two members.
So in April, I don't know when it hit yet, that's when they're gonna do the trainings on the construction.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So the one thing is, there's a better, the more favorable, if the actions that are taken are recommended under a, need a nicer down, costs a hundred dollars, it might be in your best interest to do one of those, pay the hundred bucks for somebody, and they will go through and say, yes, oh, probably is that. Like, you're below that. And then, instead of being a two-to-one match, I believe it'll give you a three-to-one. So then you have to put a plus on it. I, 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 I can't. I'll send you that. Uh, and so that, you'd probably want to try and do this month, early next month. Then in April, uh, there's gonna be the trainings for the construction. End of April, beginning of May, when you actually apply to that, then, uh, I believe you'd get the money in September.
That was in the first draft.
You have three years to do the project, so you're not being a pro there. But, um,
It's got, it's got two members and four years.
Unless it has changed in the last five years. And it might have, a little bit, but unless it's changed in the last five years, you're guaranteed to get some money, hundreds. Not necessarily as much as you want, but, uh, I mean, I would have to get some money less than, and, uh, fifteen. I mean, there's a roof, I know, it's a lot. The roof's fine, okay.
Yeah. I wrote today, I was, I was reading up on it today, and I did read, I thought it was in here, but I guess maybe it's not. Oh, that's where I was reading.
That's good. I just said, I, I'll, I'll send you that. And if at any point in time, um, I can help, you do have to maybe have, like, your board has to maybe ask, the town can't apply.
The first public hearing.
And Katie, so.
I already talked, but I don't, I don't think so.
Waiting for an application. And the inverse is, if he doesn't hear from you, he might start nagging you. So, not to put you on the hot seat, but like, I talked to him, he's like, well, do they need help? Like, I'll call him now. And I was like, not right now. Don't call him right now. But like, you know, uh, he'll, 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 he'll know.
Say that again?
Didn't, uh, that should get it over with. That'd be a great time. That would be a great time.
So in that case, you're not going without.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that.
He doesn't have the, the trucks.
I did notice that it was actually a lovely dog. I'm hoping, trying. One more. No can. No cans, no road.
All right.
We have no.
Is your microphone on?
Is your microphone on?
I know, I know.
If you're staying, stay. Have a seat.
I agree, I think so, but.
All right, all right. Uh, would everybody like to stand for the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Board member Drake?
Here.
Board member Nysel?
Here.
Board member Steen?
Here.
Board member Van Blarkum?
Here.
Supervisor DeScalfani?
Here.
Uh, tonight, among other things, we have a resolution hiring a building inspector and an assessor clerk. We're still working on our STR law and our lawyer is finalizing the wording into the law. It should be ready by next month. We still have one more workshop meeting later this month tying it all together. We're also passing a conservation advisory council law. It will be a new chapter in our code book. This will help the town prepare for changing environment and move away from fossil fuels in the future. This law is also a tool. Like Safari, it's for, like Safari is for flooding, it's giving the town points to work towards state and federal grants. The CAC will help us find ways to manage and mitigate environmental issues and challenges. Anyone interested in being a member, please send a letter or email of interest to town clerk or myself.
Oh, I have something.
Approve town board minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Financial report. Ambulance fees, $7,236.37. Tax warrant on real estate and real property, $900,000. Zoning, $100 in lieu of taxes, $9,971.99. Town clerk EZ Pass, $117.50. Rentals, cell tower, the medic building, $1,899.75. Police fees, $75. Building fees, $2,360.80. Dog license, $39. Stumpage fees, $11,011. Vital statistics, $250. Planning, $488. Highway revenues, $1,432,485.20. Fuel and gas, $2,604.17 for a grand total of $2,368,638.78. Communications? Anything, Joyce?
Um, our Ulster County comptroller, March Gallagher, has asked us to update our maps showing where folks aren't able to get spectrum cable. If you or someone you know, well, you probably can't watch the show if you don't have it, but if, you'll see it on YouTube. Yeah, I was thinking about that when I wrote this. If you or someone you know does not have spectrum cable available to them, please call my office at 688-5004. By the way, when we were starting to do this, we found out there's an even bigger problem. That Spectrum does have it, but they're asking, asking folks for astronomical amounts to hook up. I mean, I'm hearing 20,000, 40,000, as high as, um, the Phoenicia fishing game was quoted, $83,000. And there's no question period right now, Beth, but, you know, it's a problem, but call me tomorrow if you have a story. Um, yeah, so this is like extortion. So we're going to put it in March Gallagher's lap and see if she can do something with it. I understand that if people called the Public Service Commission a few times, after getting a $20,000 quote, they then got their cable free. So if you folks want to, feel free to call that Public Service Commission, but we're going to put it in March Gallagher's lap because she has a lot more clout than we do. And, uh, this is very upsetting. So I really, this is a crazy thing. So that's where we're at with that. So again, if you know of anybody that doesn't have cable or they don't have it because they can't afford the astronomical amount they were quoted, please give me a call or email or even call me at home. My phone number's in the book because it's really upsetting. And that's all I got.
All right, committee reports.
Do ambulance?
Do ambulance, right.
Total calls received, 54. Mutual aid given, one. Town of Hunter, mutual aid received, zero. An equally busy February followed our record-breaking call volume in January. Bel Air certainly contributed to the total, summoning our responders a total of 18 times. Thankfully, the balance of those injuries were non-life threatening. Throw in a mix of auto accidents mostly attributed to road conditions and you have yet another record-breaking month. Many thanks go out to our crews whom have been running constantly, particularly on the weekends. Our beautiful new ambulance was delivered quickly after the last town board meeting. I sincerely commend the town board for expediting the purchase as without being proactive and purchasing this in-stock unit, the town would have had to wait up to 24 months for another ambulance to be built due to chassis, chassis and component shortages attributed to supply chain issues. Ask our neighbors in Woodstock about that and would have had to absorb another $25,000 in price increases. It is without doubt that this vehicle will serve the town well. Currently, the vehicle is being outfitted with radios in the process of being certified by New York State and driver training will commence within the next two weeks. COVID update. Finally, as of, as of March 5th, there are no active cases in the town of Shandaken. Total cumulative cases in the town since the beginning of the pandemic have reached 270 with 269 recovered. Thankfully, there is still only the one fatality accounted for in the town of Shandaken. There are, there are 123 active cases of COVID in Ulster County with cumulative cases in the county reaching 36,999. There are a total of 371 cumulative fatalities since the beginning of the pandemic in the county with 36,505 individuals recovered. Stay safe out there. Richard Muller-Liley, Chief of Department, Shandaken Ambulance.
Thanks, Kyle. I don't believe we have a building.
No.
Uh, report. Uh, police, Kevin?
Yeah, uh, so police report, February 2022, there was a total of 144 calls, 402 property checks, four arrests. Chad couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, Rick, do you want to speak on Phoenicia Water? Going once?
Two leaks, the main leak that fixed, but I was talking to someone over here, we've got a lot of issues because I was put in in 2000, new filtration plant, I keep going, new, 2004. But, uh, we've, we've got a lot of issues there and they have to be addressed. Uh, we have, uh, uh, over on High Street, we need that loop taken care of. So if we had a flood where one of the bridges went out, they would be out of water over there.
Right.
Or I'd have a pump that runs, but they'd have to boil water every day. And, uh, we need a new pump at the filtration plant. I have two there, but they've been running since 2004. And I can't sleep at night, but everybody else does, but I can't, you know, because I'm saying, when is this going to, one or both of them go?
We don't sleep either, Rick. Just thinking about you being awake.
The fact of the matter is that, uh, these two pumps were put in, there were supposed to be three pumps at the time and they, they shorted us once. And, uh, of course, back then, you know, now, you know.
It's astronomical now.
I'm waiting to see what happens with that. You know, this fellow here says he gets money.
Trying.
Come on.
Thank you, Rick. No one here from Pine Hill Water? Holly, you have?
Ethan said everything's going fine with Pine Hill Water.
Okay. Uh, and museum?
Museum. Shandaken Historical Museum's monthly report for February 2022. Along with the 48 visitors, I continue genealogical searches. Currently, I'm helping Susan and Mark Gagannon search for Michael and Peter McCann. Nicole Jenkins, who is searching for Katie Foy Ellsworth. Valerie LaRoberdear from the Hinckley and Molino families, is searching for William Hinckley, all of which are from the late 1800s. I also continue posting on the internet and this seems to generate numerous questions and often leads to property searches. Leah Perloff, a new homer homeowner from Phoenicia, is very excited about her property's history. We recently received a donation from Hillary Smith, new owner of Forest Dutter's property. It seems some of his things were left behind and she is graciously passing them on to our museum. At our monthly board meeting, two new board members were announced, Jonathan Baldwin and Catherine Ellen Stringer. The museum board is looking forward to a new year. They are busy planning improvements to the building and events for the new year. We look forward to the return of Vinnie Sorvolini and his outstanding work. Also, we look forward to working with Kyle Steen. He has been a positive force in the growth of the Shandaken Historical Museum and continues to be. Thank you, Kathleen Myers.
Thanks, Kyle.
You're welcome.
All right, now we're open for comments on resolutions. All right. I'm going to make a couple of motions. We should set up a workshop meeting this month. Does the 21st seem like a good day for everybody? It's a Monday. Do we want to do six o'clock on the 21st?
Six o'clock on the 21st?
March 21st.
So that's replacing the meeting that was scheduled for the 14th.
Right.
Yes, I'll take that one.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
You got it, Alan.
And we'll call it, we'll, we'll call it a special town board meeting slash workshop, so if we have to.
Workshop is just not really what it's called, but we put a slash. It's always a special meeting if it's not in our, you know, at the beginning of the year and we know, we notify all the meetings we have, so it's always a special meeting workshop.
I'm sorry, what time is that?
Uh, six p.m.
Six o'clock.
On the 21st. Make that motion. All in favor? Second, I mean, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we should make a motion for a public hearing for the STR law and the fee schedule change.
Will you have enough time at the workshop to do that or no? Do you want to do it?
We will, actually, but.
Because I hate to cancel it again.
Okay. Okay, you're right, you're right. Maybe I'm.
I mean, it's up to you guys, I mean.
I'm shooting too soon. All right, let's forget that one.
Yeah, let's make sure you guys are all done at the workshop, right?
Yeah, we could do that at the workshop.
And then people know to check the news section of the website.
After the 21st for the new updated STR law and fee schedule. That would be added to our normal fee schedule. Um, I'm going to make the motion to accept a resignation from Patty Heintz. Uh, the resignation is for, uh, April 18th. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, good.
Let's add it away. Let's move on to resolutions.
I'd like to make resolution 52-22, resolution to pay all bills. Whereas the Department of Audit and Control require town boards to sign and inspect all vouchers coming into the town for payment to number and total amounts for each fund. Therefore, be it resolved that the town board authorize the following vouchers paid. General Fund, $825,402.62. Highway Fund, $106,367.76. For a total of $935,656.39 and moves its adoption.
Second?
Second.
Board member Drake?
Yes.
Board member Nysel?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Van Blarkum?
Yes.
Supervisor DeScalfani?
Yes. Those NAs are because the, the funds came in after, or the resolutions were signed after this was done. It'll be added on to next month's totals.
Resolution 5322, resolution local law one 22, creation of conservation advisory council. Whereas an introductory local law entitled creation of conservation advisory council was introduced before the town board of the town of Shandaken on February 7, 2022. And upon notice duly published and posted, a public hearing was held on March 7, 2022 before the town board. And whereas public discussion was heard at such hearing concerning the merits and environmental significance of said introductory local law, be it resolved that the adoption of the introductory local law entitled creation of conservation advisory council is hereby determined to, determined not to have a significant effect on the environment and therefore not subject to SEQRA. Be it further resolved that the introductory local law entitled creation of conservation advisory council of the town of Shandaken be and hereby is adopted as local law one of 2022 of the town of Shandaken on March 7, 2022 and move it, and moves its adoption.
So here's the deal. 53 should have been the sequel, uh, is 40, 54, so we need, you guys need to do that. Elizabeth, if you want to just change the numbers to 53 and 54? Because first we have to do the adverse effects, that environmental impact form.
Ah, right.
I got it backwards.
On 54?
Yeah, so you could just change the numbers on your paper. So that should be done first, right?
Technically, we have to do 54.
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't this the CAC we're doing right now?
Oh, it's the timber harvest.
Yeah, this is the CAC we're doing.
Never mind, forget everything except.
Yeah. This is okay, but I just want to include that.
It did say about no impact.
That we will add the term limits as set forth in the first version into the law.
Do we want to write that in right now?
Include the term limits. The lawyer said in my correspondence with them, you do not have to do a seeker. It's.
It's a simple net debt, but it's still seeker.
It's a.
You're adopting the law.
He said it was unnecessary.
Well, you've got the forms.
But we have it and we could do it.
The lawyer said you don't need it.
Yep. I absolutely asked, does it need it? And he said not for this kind of a thing.
Because the only one I knew we had was the one for the budget, 2% tax cap. You see, we don't need a seeker now.
Right. And I, I thought the same.
He sent us this resolution, he even wrote it here, does not have a significant, I mean, we do want, but that's what he sent us. I know. It wasn't through me. I thought we were doing the timber harvest when I saw the seeker.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so you have.
We're going to include the term limits that are set forth in the first draft. I gave you there, it's a, there's a section, blah, blah, blah. The membership section.
I believe it said that two members of five years, two members of four.
I'll read it now. Uh, the terms of appointed, the terms of appointment of the members of the commission shall be as follows. Three members shall be appointed for a term of five years. Two members shall be appointed for a term of four years. And two members shall be appointed for a term of three years. All successive appointments shall be for terms of three years. If a vacancy shall occur, otherwise, then by expiration of term, it shall be filled by the town board appointment for the unexpired term. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Second?
All of, all of.
Who seconded?
Robert.
Robert.
Board member Drake?
Yes.
Board member Nysel?
Yes.
Board member Steen?
Yes.
Board member Van Blarkum?
Yes.
Supervisor DeScalfani?
Yes.
So now it's a seeker.
Resolution 5422, resolution of the town board of the town of Shandaken determining that there are no adverse impacts in the environment for a timber harvest, logging permit. Whereas the town board is looking to approve a timber harvest logging permit application for Winness�, Inc., 5793 Winness� Club Road, Oliveria, SPL 34-point dash one dash three. Whereas the possible environmental impacts of the approval of the logging permit for Winness�, Inc. have been considered by the town board. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board has determined that the approval of the logging permit for Winness�, Inc. will not have insignificant adverse impacts on the environment. And be it further resolved, the town board authorizes the supervisor to take such further steps as might be necessary to discharge the board's responsibilities as lead agency for this action, including but not limited to the issuance of a negative declaration consistent with this resolution and move its adoption.
Second?
Well, you have to do the form.
And so now we'll do the short environmental assessment form. Uh, brief description, timber harvest. And we'll fill in, uh, the address.
It's all on the first page. I put it in there.
Right, does the proposed action only involve legislative adoptive, local law ordinance? No.
No.
Does the proposed action require a permit, approval of funding from any other governmental agency? If yes, yes. Total is 99 acres. Uh, total acreage, 462 acres. Check all land uses residential. Check all land uses residential. Uh, the purpose of the action, is it a permitted use? Yes, consistent with adopted comprehensive plan? Yes. Seven, is the site of the proposed action located in or adjoining state listed? No. Is the site of the proposed actions located in or adjoins, uh, or predominant character of existing built or natural landscape? No. Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic and present levels? No. Are there public transportation services available or near the site of the proposed action? No. Are there any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on the site? No. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? If the proposal action will exceed requirements, describe designed features and technologies? No. It's all no. You want me to keep reading?
Yes.
No, no.
You gotta read the wetlands, you gotta mention the wetlands.
No. No wetlands.
No wetlands.
Uh, no, no. Stormwater, no. I have a little cheat sheet here. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities? No. Has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the location of active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste? No. I affirm, information provided above is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge. And I sign here. Or applicant signs here. Okay. Part two?
Okay.
Did we actually vote on that? I think there was a second, but I don't think...
Second part?
Pete seconded, we haven't voted.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Right, we need to vote on it.
All right. Who seconded?
Peter.
I did.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Barcom?
Yes.
Supervisor DeScalani?
Yes.
Resolution 55-22, resolution of the town board, the town of Shandaken approving timber harvest logging permit. Did we not do that already?
This is the, no.
Okay. Whereas the town board has received and reviewed the timber harvest logging permit application for Winisook, Inc., 5793 Winisook Club Road, Olivearia, SBL 34-point dash 1-dash 3. Whereas the possible environmental impacts of the logging permit for Winisook, Inc. have been considered by the town board and said board determined a negative declaration under state environmental quality review. Whereas permittee is required to provide the town board a bond or a certified bank check in the amount of $10,000 to be held by the town until completion of the job and highway superintendent's approval to release funds. Therefore, be it resolved that the town board hereby approves said logging permit for Winisook, Inc. as long as all legal requirements continue to be met, and I move its adoption.
Second?
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Barcom?
Yes.
Supervisor DeScalani?
Yes.
Resolution 56-2022, resolution for purchase of highway vehicle. Whereas the town of Shandaken highway superintendent has identified a piece of highway equipment for replacement, and whereas the town of Shandaken used the Anandaga bid and found a vehicle to purchase, therefore be it resolved that the town of Shandaken town board does hereby authorize the town supervisor to approve the purchase of a Dodge Ram 4x4 dump truck, VIN number NG255742, in the amount of $87,566 from Robert Green, 236 Bridgeville Road, Monticello, New York, 12701, and move its adoption.
Second?
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Barcom?
Yes.
Supervisor DeScalani?
Yes.
Move Resolution 57-2022 to hire an assessor clerk. Whereas under Section 20 of the town law, the town board shall designate all appointed officers and employees of the town. Therefore, be it resolved that the following personnel be appointed to the Shandaken Assessor's Office as an assessor clerk. Kyla Sharon, at $14 per hour, 35 hours a week, not to exceed $20,580 for the 2020 fiscal year, and move its adoption.
Second?
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Barcom?
Yes.
Supervisor DeScalani?
Yes.
You're up here now. That's the last one I have. I need a mail over the key. Can we vote on that?
Yes.
Resolution 58-22, uh, resolution appointing building inspector. Whereas pursuant to the town law, the building officer is responsible for oversight of all construction projects which meet the criteria for a building permit within the town of Shandaken, and ensure any remodeling, additions, or new structures must meet federal and state and local building safety standards, including structural plumbing, electrical UL inspector, fire prevention, flood mitigation, and to perform multiple inspections throughout the project from initiation issuance of a certificate of occupancy or compliance. Therefore, be it resolved, the town board of the town of Shandaken hereby appoints Donna Lemoine as town building inspector, to be paid $20 per hour at 30 hours per week plus mileage while in town business, and not to exceed $25,000 for the fiscal year of 2022, and move its adoption.
Second?
Second?
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steen?
Yes.
Board Member Van Barcom?
Yes.
Supervisor DeScalani?
Yes.
Okay.
It was sent separate.
I believe you. I still need a mail over the key.
There's always copies up here, though. Open public comment.
Oh, shoot. Turn on the microphone, will you? You probably don't need it.
Thanks.
No offense. No offense.
I'm sure. Angela Galindo, Phoenisha, New York. As if you didn't know. Anyway, last month I reported that I had sent a letter to Governor Cuomo over a year ago regarding the lack of cell service in the town of Shandaken. And then I sent it to 10 other people and certified the term receipt. The only response I got was from Verizon. And they were, it was not a very nice letter. It said that, um, there are issues with finding sites to put a tower on. The, um, state is charging them extra fees when they have to put cabling along, um, state highway right away. And the animosity by the town board, um, is hampering the whole process, is what he told me. So anyway, I sent a letter to Governor Cuomo. And I am so excited, even though it doesn't say much, we got a response. And she says, "I want to thank you for writing and sharing your concerns with me. Your input is vital to ensuring that New York works for everyone. My team and I will review your concerns and follow up for any additional information. Together, we will rebuild New York and continue to move our state forward. Sincerely, Kathy Hope." So...
Yay.
And I also put all of this on, um, the cell service, the town of Shandaken Facebook page. Anybody wants to add to it? Spread the word, we need to make more noise. And I thank you.
On, on that same subject, I'd like Robert to give us an update on his...
So, uh, I sent a, an email to the town board, uh, roughly, maybe about three weeks ago, attempting to summarize some of the actions or communications that I've had, that we've had to try and move that forward. So to, to kind of summarize that. Uh, in my, my day job, I happen to work with a company called Crown Castle. Uh, Crown Castle is an internet service provider, but they do not provide consumer level service. So it's not something that you as an individual ever would have hired. They provide internet generally to companies like Verizon or larger commercial entities. They are a commercial provider of fiber optic internet. They are also, uh, the entity that currently holds, uh, the New York State contract for building towers. They're not the only entity that builds towers, uh, but they are one of the predominant builders of cell towers within New York State. Um, and so I've had some communications with them. And, uh, the initial kind of result of that was that they were, I'll say, willing to do a, a audit of the town, uh, resulting in effectively two, two findings. So the first finding is that we have very poor cell service. I think we all, I think we all knew that, right? Like a, a bold result there. The second bit is more interesting. The second bit is that because they are the provider of, uh, the internet service at most of the surrounding towers, they provide the backhaul internet for a number of the surrounding towers. Um, not necessarily directly, in some cases, they've been a subcontracted entity. But through that information, they've been able to see the approximate number of individuals who have transited through this area. So they came into Olive, they lost service, and then they reappeared someplace else. And so through that, they've got an approximate set of numbers of how many folks at a given snapshot in time are in this area or have been in this area. Um, and their determination is that it would be economically feasible, i.e. profitable, for them to work with the town to build a tower. Now, that determination does not a tower build, but it does indicate that they see a profitable line to working with the town. Um, so as far as, uh, call it next steps, um, there's a handful. Um, they are, I'm currently waiting on, and I indicated this a couple of weeks ago, waiting on some, some numbers and call it sample template contract type of language that they have been able to provide the town. Uh, I think the next step from that would likely be a communication with more of, of the board, to have them give a presentation, so you're not hearing this just from me. I'm imparting things under my best understanding, but I think it would be, uh, it would behoove the board for everyone to be able to ask questions, not just myself. Um, and then from there, uh, they would start to do, um, my understanding again is site survey type of works. So, i.e. looking for locations to place, um, towers. From there, a few things that I, um, I can't necessarily say definitive, but I can say are sort of my understanding, my, my sense of things. First, they have indicated that this particular property, i.e. the town hall property, has some potential. It is, of course, within a floodplain, uh, which presents challenges, as is most of the town. But they do see some viability in that area. The second bit is that, um, while they wish to approach things from a tower-first standpoint, that isn't necessarily the only alternative. So there are things called small cells, uh, which are roughly the size of a mini fridge, give or take, or a microwave, um, that provides cell service, uh, to obviously a much smaller area. So a tower might hypothetically go miles, uh, in, under optimal conditions. These would be more likely something you would put on top of a telephone pole and might have a range in the hundreds of yards type of a thing. And so, um, economically speaking, a tower is generally going to be preferable. Uh, but given the nature of our geographic reality, um, small cell apparatus may prove to be more productive. And I'm, I'm admittedly, I think, speaking somewhat beyond my own technical knowledge. Uh, but I can say somewhat optimistically that they see something of a path forward. Um, I have no doubt the challenges will arise as they always do. But I haven't yet run into them saying, "No, something isn't possible. Um, it's just a matter of doing all the necessary work and doing it right and trying to find a path forward." And I suspect that that is a process that candidly may very well take years, perhaps. Um, but, um, is, I believe, moving forward successfully? At least that's my best attempt at recording that. Um, and I, I have calls with my contacts on that side, generally twice a week. And, um, they are, I'm waiting on them to send me information and then hopefully get an opportunity to have it communicate more broadly than myself.
Yeah, I, I ask you to, you know, ask them to make a presentation to us and whenever they're ready. I would, I would love to even, you know, we can have it at a town board meeting where they just address us and the whole town.
Absolutely, and they've, they've said that they're amenable to that. They obviously want to do some preparation, but, um, they are, you know, optimistic about that because they see a path to it being profitable for them.
It may be a combination of putting a cell and some of the small boosters.
Absolutely. Um, I mean, the, the technical options are myriad, uh, but we have a company that contrary to Verizon, you know, Verizon obviously see, has, has indicated that they believe that there is a, a challenged relationship. They don't necessarily appear to see a, a, an obvious path forward. Here's a company that appears to, to see the reverse. Um, and so the hope is that that's something we can follow through to good effect. We all want some service.
Absolutely. Um, we cannot lose sight of the, um, significant issues involved with life and safety. And I, I explained this the last time. My father could not get emergency service when there was a power outage because we had no cell service.
Absolutely.
And also these small refrigerator type things, would they reach Woodland Valley and the other areas that are further out from Route 28 where we still have the same significant issue?
So I obviously don't want to speak kind of beyond my own knowledge, but in theory...
Right, I think we need to keep that in mind.
In theory, these are sufficiently small that they can be placed on telephone poles. That's effectively intent behind that.
They won't have to be within line of sight?
Not necessarily line of sight, um, but, uh, they have a much shorter range, of course, than a tower does. Admittedly, I think that it... Areas like 28 are much easier, of course. The, the hollows become increasingly challenging to do. Uh, I don't necessarily think it's impossible, it may become...
It becomes challenging, but it's not impossible.
It's not impossible, with enough money, nothing's impossible.
Money and frame of mind, if any can, you know, there are grants out there.
Yep.
Like I said, um, that's, that's things as I know them at this moment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
And I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vivian?
On that subject, um, the Ulster County is looking to put in a couple of communications towers for their emergency services type of communication, not for commercial use, but possibly could be used for that as well. And they are looking, really actively looking to see what is the best site. They want to put a couple in Shandaken, maybe two or three. Uh, and they're ready, ready to go ahead with the plan, but they don't have the direction at this point of where would be the, I mean, they're looking into it, doing whatever research they can. It sounds like you need to talk to them as well.
Right, well, a, a, actually, the, the Fire District, Phoenisha Fire District, put three small towers on each of their firehouses, or one on each of their, Mount Trumper, Phoenisha, and Shandaken up here. And there's small towers and they're, they're high band. It's a, it's a communication tower. It's really helped a lot for the Fire District in communication. But that, it, it isn't the same as, as cell service. I mean, that's a whole different antenna that would need to go on there. So that would be something that we'd have to work out between Ulster County Emergency Services and the Planning Department if they want to co-join those two types of technologies.
Um, so this, this tower is that are already up on the firehouses?
Yeah.
They've been up for a while?
Uh, like two years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I, they, they want to build something on their own, new, for the purpose. I, I mean, they certainly could piggyback on whatever we have, but...
Absolutely. I, I mean, if there's more to be had, they, everybody would be happy, sure.
Right, right. So I, I think, Robert, if you could talk to Dennis Doyle of the Planning Department, Ulster County Planning Board?
I'm happy to make that connection.
Yeah, and just tell them what you have out about where the, you know, where the best place to put the towers for the small...
My, my understanding is that a lot of that is actually Crown reaching out because they, because they do this statewide, uh, they have connections with most of the counties. They provide internet for most of the county. Um, and so I believe that may already be done, but I'm happy to try and confirm that.
Yeah, I don't know who he's working with, it might be Crown.
I, I couldn't say.
He wasn't asking me, you know, what I knew. So it sounds like they're really open to more input from Shandaken. That's what they, actually, want input from Shandaken.
I'm happy to try and close the circle on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll try and make the connection for you. I talk to Dennis quite often. Anyone else comment? James?
So just on, on the, the topic that you brought up, it sounds as though the companies, the service providers, think that we don't want this, uh, so it might be beneficial to just ask like a, uh, non-binding statement of...
We have, we have numerous, numerous times.
Every time we make a memorializing resolution, they think we're attacked.
Every time we make a memorializing resolution, they think we're attacked.
We did it all, we had a Facebook thing, all that, and, you know, eighteen miles of dead zone.
They take that as antagonizing, that we're, you know.
Yeah, we said, we had a big survey and a petition with, you know, hundreds, hundreds of names. We had an online one, we had a paper one.
Maybe we don't say it the right way.
No, but we put it all in packets, Rob did, you know, we all did it. When, it's on YouTube, it's an awesome video, but. You know.
Well, this is the first time I've heard anybody say that, that a company has said it looks like it's profitable. It seems like that was always the thinking point, oh, we're not going to make a money. This is great news, Robert, that it's really good to say that.
Yeah, they're, uh, Vivian, they're, they're all going to say it's profitable. I mean, any company that's approached me for a job is going to tell you it's profitable. I'm just making that safer.
I would just say that.
I mean, I approached them, they didn't approach me.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying that they, they're not going to make a pitch to do this thing for the town if they don't think it's profitable.
But the service providers, they, they've always been saying, oh, we don't have enough.
Just to remind, a little history on it, with the tower that we have, that there was a map done many years ago when we made the telecommunications law. The map shows a buildup of towers to show maximum service area for cell service. We did that many years before we had a cell tower. And then I think it was Jerry Bob Cross that, he had a company come in and build the tower on, like, on your park with no carriers on it. So they built the tower, Irene, Irene came, in response to Irene, AT&amp;T answered, went on that tower. We went to Verizon multiple times, T-Mobile doing applications on the Bellar Tower, we asked them, they all kept turning it down, they just said it's not busy enough, not busy enough.
But that doesn't make sense.
And then something keep relying on is, it's not enough business for them, that's basically what I'm saying. You can build a tower, but it doesn't mean the carriers are necessarily going to want it. And then you just have a tower.
So that's the purpose of this audit, is that they believe that over the last two years, traffic has sufficiently increased to perhaps hit that profitability threshold. Because again, they don't provide cell service, they sell it to Verizon. So they have to think they can sell it to somebody else.
Line access to the tower.
And the tower itself. But then they don't get their money through us, they get their money through Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile. They believe they can sell it to them because the amount of traffic in this area has increased. Maybe they're wrong, as long as it's in our favor.
We got previous tower companies said the same thing. And there'll be phone calls offering to pay off the town for the renewed contract, I would advise, not really, but. They usually offer like ninety-nine or a hundred thousand dollars to take over the rest of the contract, and then the town doesn't get any proceeds from there on out.
Great.
So then you have a tower that you don't get any benefits out of. But yeah, like, continue, I mean, great, if you get cell service, that would be great. I'm just telling you that any company, if they're gonna, if they really want it, they're gonna tell you that it's profitable, of course.
Well, and we're hoping that it is profitable and that they're willing to do the work.
All right, let's move on. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of Bill Kakos and Rustine Amore. Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Happy spring.
First time anybody's done that.
Run towards Eric. It's rare, it's rare.
That's definitely interesting, if the county is working with the same people as you are.
I wouldn't be surprised because they, they built all the cell service in the inner room. They did all, you know, because people fight on the north. I mean, they lost cell service on the north, where they were supposed to.
Like the time.
Thank you.
So hopefully.
Yeah, because I mean, I, when I was speaking, Dennis said something totally different. And he said, oh, by the way, we, we just need to.
No, that would be great.
Some input from Shandaken where they want the cell towers and, you know.
That, I mean, I'm happy to.
He said they really don't have a, a, a plan, they're seeing it towards like, you know, this various configuration, like upon a mountain.
It's really tricky, it's really tricky. Honestly, they think this law could be the best initial, right here. And this wouldn't hit twenty-eight, wouldn't hit, wouldn't hit twenty-eight, but this would hit part of twenty-eight. And we own this land. Um, and obviously you have to put it on a big, big flat, a flood plain, but. There's plenty of room, uh, they're not that expensive.
It's not like it's necessarily probably an area with a big, great view.
No, I mean, you know, it's, it's, and, and.
I mean, I don't know how people work here and feel adequate. It's not like right up against somebody's house.
It's, I mean, and we, we own it, it's easy permit.